Well, without further ado, I'm going to officially open the Wednesday, September, or October 7th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting in the town of Southampton. All members are present right now. We've got Keith Locke, myself, Dan LaValle, and Cindy Palmer. Paul Fergal is unable to plug in with us at this point because he's lost power over in his section of town, and he may at some point come in. But right now, we've got a quorum, and we will start the meeting. It's also being televised on Charter Channel number 191. And we have a guest tonight outside of Larry Smith, our consultant, and I don't see that he is online yet, asking to get in. But we have an intern that asked to be a part of this meeting tonight from Springfield Technical Community College. He's doing some sort of work on sustainable planning, and he, part of his internship, I guess, or his course, is to weigh in on some Planning Board meetings. So perhaps he'll join us eventually, but I don't see him waiting to get in at this point. His name is Ed, or Ben Sheminski. But anyway, we're going to continue on. And a correction on the agenda that I had this meeting and the first agenda item as a continuation of the public hearing for Vulcan Dreamer Inc., but it is not a continuation. We closed that public hearing at the last meeting. It's my mistake. It's actually a discussion tonight about the decision that we are rendering tonight on that application, which we closed the public hearing on. So just to clear that up. So at this point, I'll ask Larry Smith, to our consultant of the board that drafted that decision and the conditions to go forward. And then if you'd like, Larry, I can pull that up on the screen if you choose to, the decision, unless you want to speak before that.
Did you want to just talk to Ezra briefly about the four members in attendance?
Okay, Ezra, we have four members present tonight, not the five. Special permit requires that the two-thirds majority will be required past this, or approved this, application. And we'd ask you, at any point, either now or any point during the discussion going forward, before we close the discussion on the conditions, that you could choose to opt to continue this meeting again with the five full board members there, or proceed as if.
Yeah, thanks for letting me know, Paul and Larry. So I've been in this situation before, and it is a little, it's a little nerve-wracking, because we want to make sure that we have the most possibility for a majority vote. And I guess what I've done in the, in the past is, I've said, yes, I feel that we've presented tonight. I feel that the, or I feel that we presented last time to the best of our ability, covering all the aspects, you know, we're proper zoning. This is where the city of, town of Southampton has properly zoned this. So I'm confident that we've given enough information. If there is further discussion, you know, I might just ask for your good graces to let me know that, or there a signal that might indicate that you are ready to vote. Keeping in mind, I realize you can't say, yes, we're going to vote yes, and you're going to be fine. But if it is a no vote, that means, I believe, two years have to go by, which would basically destroy this project. So, you know, I've had in the past, board members say, yes, we, we agree that we were able to move forward in this. So as not to leave me hanging, because if you vote, and there's only three of you, and that's a no vote, it basically ends this, this entire endeavor. So you can choose to give me some sort of signal that would indicate that we can go forward. I've done all I can, and I'm certainly more than willing to answer any further in-depth questions about the project to tighten up any possible loose ends that, that might be there. And yeah, I'll end it with that. And if there's further discussion, I'll certainly put more input as to how I feel that this is a, a practical location and, and something that serves the Southampton Bylaw. And is, you know, if this was the first one to open in the, in the, in the Commonwealth, I would be a little bit more nervous. But since this is the 57th to, to possibly be approved, I feel confident.
Paul, can I just add?
Go ahead, Larry.
It did have to be put off to a future meeting. Would you have to wait two weeks? Or could you just hold a special meeting, like on Monday or sometime early next week?
I could, I could hold a special meeting. I would have to find out, you know, I've got to get 48 hours' notice and make sure the availability of the, the board members as well. Naturally, it's going to be done in this format. So I, I could, I could do that.
Okay.
Keith?
Thank you. Larry, and I guess Mr. Chairman, just kind of, it's an interesting situation, just a question regarding, I guess, maybe master in law, or even open meeting law, could the applicant ask for an informal straw poll?
No, you really can't do that. I mean, I mean, there, there is a vote. And I mean, to allow to take a informal vote ahead of time could work either way, but it's sort of like giving an advantage or a disadvantage to either side. So I would prefer to do the route that, you know, if Ezra, at some point determines that, you know, he would prefer to have the, the full contingent of five members voting, that the board could allow that.
Yeah, and to be quite honest with you, right, go through the conditions and see what the discussion is. And if Ezra, at some point, feels that there's some controversy in some of those issues, then it's his obligation to ask to go in a different direction, correct, Larry?
Correct.
All right. So for all intents and purposes, Ezra will proceed then with the conditions that have been drafted. Fair enough?
Yeah, I appreciate that, Paul. And, and I, and I, what I'm hearing is that I still have the opportunity to, we might as well discuss, we're all here, we've gathered here, we might as well discuss conditions and answer further questions. And at some point, I can say, well, it looks like I would prefer to choose to push it forward to the next meeting.
Very good. All right, let me pull that decision up, Larry. We've got some people waiting to enter here, so.
That's good. So when you do this, you actually go from back to front, which is, you first vote on the conditions, you then vote on the findings, and then you actually vote on whether you're going to grant the special permit or not.
All right, let me get this up on the screen, if you bear with me, see if I can do this again. All right. Larry, I'll ask you to proceed, and tell me when to go from page to page.
Okay. Was somebody going to jump in there?
Well, I was just going to say it's not open yet. We're just seeing this file list.
I thought I shared it.
Shared, but not.
You shared your desktop, Paul, so you can open up on your computer, we'll probably see it.
How come it's not?
That's it.
Maximize the screen, and then scroll.
There you go.
Got it?
Yeah.
That's it.
Just on the, on the front page there, filling in the date that it was filed with the town clerk. Do we all agree? Because I asked Ira about that. Do we all agree that it was August 26th? Paul, I think that they, the clerk said that you have the copy that she stamped with the, with the submission date on it.
Yeah, that's what she had.
August 26th, perfect. Okay, we're good. Let's go down to the conditions.
I had a comment, or something I think I learned, which wasn't obvious to me, and being the first one of these I've done, maybe wasn't obvious to other, other people. I was looking for the, for the word recreational marijuana dispensary. And I believe that is synonymous with adult use. That, that's correct, right?
That is incorrect.
Oh, that's incorrect?
That was incorrect. Recreational is a term that some people choose to use, but the technical term is adult use. That's what appears in the West Hampton, the Southampton Bylaw. That's also what appears in the CCT regulations. At no point in either of those do you see the word recreational included. Some people do refer to that as just, you know, well, it's recreational, but it is technically not, it is technically not the right term.
Oh, I see. It's almost like slang.
That's correct.
Well, yes, that's correct.
Thank you.
Larry, do you want findings? Do you want conditions?
I want conditions. Scroll down a little bit, about another page and a half, and you got it. There you go. We'll start with number one. So I'm just going to read through these. If we get to a point, and I'm going to assume if you don't hear any comment, that everybody's okay with it. If we get to one, after I read it, and you do have a comment, you know, feel free to jump in at that point, and then we can talk about it to see whether the board wants to revise it or amend it or not. So we'll start with number one, which is that this special permit is not transferable. Okay, this special permit is issued to this applicant. They cannot sell it, they cannot trade it, they cannot pass it on to another entity. If they want to do that, then that entity has to come back in and get a new special permit, as they will have to go back to the CCC as well. So that's number one. Number two, is that this special permit is issued for the operation of a marijuana retailer only. And by definition, in the town's bylaw, that is what we call.
So just, just, Larry, just a quick question there. Does that mean that this retailer cannot sell any other product in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
What kind of product are you talking about?
Well, maybe something like a book about marijuana or jewelry that's attractive to people that might want to buy marijuana.
Actually, I think there is something in there that does permit that.
Okay.
The, the three categories you basically have is, you know, growing it, processing it, and selling it. And so this doesn't allow them to grow it or process. This only allows them to sell.
Okay.
Okay. Number three, any material change, extension, or alteration of such use or structure shall require a new special permit or revision to the special permit. Unauthorized deviations from this approved special permit may result in the Planning Board seeking the issuance of a cease and desist order until the deviation is addressed. Violation of any condition contained herein or failure to comply with the approved plan shall subject the applicant to a zoning enforcement action in accordance with the remedies set forth in Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A. A lot of this is just, you know, boilerplate technical stuff, just to get it in there, so everybody knows about it. Number four, is that this special permit shall not take effect, and the use authorized under it should not legally commence until such time as the applicant has recorded in the Hampshire County Registry of Deeds and that grant or index, index under the name of the owner of record or as recorded and noted in the owner's certificate of title. A copy of said special permit bearing the certification of the town clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk, and no appeal has been filed, or that if such appeal has been filed, that it has been dismissed or denied. The fee for recording or registering shall be paid by the owner or applicant. Within seven days of said recording, the applicant shall provide the town clerk and planning board in writing with the book and page numbers in which said special permit is recorded at the registry of deeds for inclusion in the record file. Number five, this approval shall lapse and become null and void if the use permitted by the special permit is not commenced within two years of the date of its approval. The Planning Board made grant extensions for good cause upon written request by the applicant, provided, A, the said request is submitted prior to the expiration of the approval, and B, the said approval requires an affirmative vote of two-thirds majority of the full board taking it a public meeting, and a public hearing is required. Number six, all work and use is authorized under this special permit shall be in accordance with, A, the application, supportive materials, and testimony submitted by the applicant and its representative to the board, and B, the approved plans entitled Dreamer Proposed Cueing Plan. It is September 4th, 2020, showing the dimensions of the outside cueing area. Dreamer One Exterior Elevation dated 091020, showing the location and dimensions of only one wall side, and Dreamer Proposed Security and Access Control Plan, including the security camera at the rear entrance to the building, and the Dreamer Proposed Fire System Plan.
I had a question about the security plan that I thought of after the meeting. And maybe now is the right time to bring it up. And it's actually an appropriate day to bring it up. Did, in anywhere, does it speak of the event of loss of power? Because I'd imagine recording, video recording wouldn't be capable with, with loss of power. Mentioned that the store would have to maybe close up during that period.
Backup generator?
Or?
Can you address that?
Yeah, happy to. So, you know, as this, as this industry is not the first industry to need security during a powder outage.
Yep.
Security companies, you know, at banks, jewelry stores, grocery stores, anywhere that, where they're going to need cameras and things like that. This is something that they've really addressed pretty rigorously. Basically, the cameras use such a small amount of energy that, that the, not, a backup generator is not required in this case, because a battery that's charged with the servers for the security system in the security room can keep the, so first of all, you know, all the doors, a power outage, all the locks become automatically shut down, right? From the outside. So, so they just default to being locked, obviously. But the cameras still roll because the battery can keep them going for up to three days.
Wow.
So in that time, they, they assume that even if it's on Friday afternoon, and the security can't come. But typically, security companies are available 24 hours to come assess and, and charge the battery or, or switch out the battery.
And then I might say, we're using, Spreading of Party Integrations, Brian, he's a local guy, I'm sure you know him.
Yeah.
So he's right around the corner. So he can help us with any kind of battery issue.
That's right.
Any of that sense.
It's good. It was just something that popped in, into my mind after, after we had talked about it last night, and I thought this may be the right spot to talk about it. So, so thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's a good question.
So I'm going to ask a question now also, just because we're asking questions. A member of the community who couldn't attend the public hearing asked me if the lighting system is a motion detector system.
That's a good question. No, it's not. I don't, so, so if you're asking about just lighting in general versus security lighting, and this is the case, especially with, right now, outdoor cultivation sites where they just can't have light, it ruins the photo period of the plants. So all cameras these days are infrared. So they don't, they can actually take very clear imagery in complete darkness, because they're, they're using infrared. So there's no light that needs to come on. And typically, the, you know, if, if the landlord or the other shops have motion lights that come on, floodlights that come out with motion, that's a possibility. But it's not typically something that's put in the system because the cameras can capture imagery in low light.
Okay, I think the question arose from the possibility that if it was a motion detector light, and the cruiser was sort of driving by, and suddenly saw a lot of floodlights, that would cue the police person to go check out what's going on, you know? I mean, if it was low light, and then suddenly it's bright light. But I also believe that our police chief has signed off on this whole plan, and I'm going to kind of go along with that. So I'm just asking on behalf of this community person.
Now, while Cindy, all, the Spreading Integration in this whole facility is pretty tight. So even if, when we're not there, if somebody even slightly opened the door, the, the whole thing is going to go firecrackers, you know, it's, so it's, you don't necessarily need a motion, I mean, you will have a motion detector inside for sure, but you don't need a motion detector outside. You know, somebody went there, and, you know, not that they can't, but if somebody, and I'm sure somebody will try to look from the window or something, try to see inside perhaps. I don't think we're going to have a motion detector for that. But there's going to be cameras, there's going to be warnings. Like I said, if anybody tried even break into anything, the whole place just lights up.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that it?
Yes, thanks, Larry.
Okay. Number seven, no outdoor storage of materials is permitted. Number eight, members or agents of the Planning Board shall have the right to enter the site at reasonable times upon prior notice, and only when accompanied by the applicant, to gather all information, measurements, photographs, or other materials needed to ensure compliance with this approval. Members or agents of the Planning Board entering onto the site for these purposes so to comply with all safety rules, regulations, and directives of the applicant, the applicant's contract. Number nine, the Planning Board retains its jurisdiction and the right to, on its own motion, modify, amend, rescind, or revoke its approval of the special permit after holding a public hearing in accordance with Chapter 44, Section 9, when there is material noncompliance with the terms of this special permit. During the hours of the facility is not operating, exterior lighting shall be reduced to only that which is necessary for security purposes.
I, I, I agree with that one, but I, I just, when I read it, I, I had trouble understanding, so I had to read it a couple times. So I'm, I'm just going to suggest a, maybe simplified rewording, and if, if you don't agree, that's perfectly fine. I would have rewrote it as, exterior lighting shall be reduced to the lowest level necessary for security purposes during the facility non-operating hours.
So you're just taking the words and moving them around?
Yeah, I was just having trouble with the sentence structure myself. But it's fine.
Is it, that's a pretty standard condition, and that wording is basically what we've been using for like the last 20 years.
Okay.
Including probably, I don't know, how many we, special permits have we done in, in Southampton? Probably at least a dozen. I guess, Mike, and that, that concern or confusion has, has not come up until, till now.
Ah, I read, I read a lot of requirements, so I, the phrasing and ordering of things is, you know, I'm part of my job, but.
Ask is, do the board members want to change this or not? Up to you.
By the way, I just want to point out one fact. We don't have any kind of lighting that's going to say, hey, there's a cannabis here. You, you all know that, right? There was no, like, a sign of leaf.
This is only, you know, this is basically, a lot of places put down lights on around, around the entrances and exits to the building at night, that, that just illuminate the doorways or whatever, when the building is not in operation.
Yeah, and, and, and we would want some sort of lighting, just, just so our video captures, you know, properly. I mean, their old, my vision for sure, but.
You're not supposed to have your, your, your sign on. Okay, the only, at night, when you're not open, all you're supposed to have on is what you need to have on for security purposes.
Yep. And in, in light of our previous conversation, that's essentially not necessary unless the law enforcement requires additional lighting, because the security cameras do operate in the dark.
So I guess the question would be, just, do you guys want to change this, or leave it the way it is?
I don't have a problem with it personally.
I think, Dan, you know, if we were writing this all over again, we could make that change. I don't think it ostensibly changes the meaning, so I'm.
Absolutely. Right, it doesn't, it doesn't change the meaning. It's just, it's, it's, yeah, I agree.
It's a style thing, yeah.
Yep.
Number 11, a log of types and quantities of hazardous materials brought on site, generated on site, and the amounts and location of disposition of these materials on and off site shall be maintained, including, shall be maintained, including all material safety data sheets, MSDS.
I have a question about that one. Who has access to those MSDSs?
Maybe the board of health? I will, my first choice, fire department. Because if this place catches on fire, and again, this is pretty much a standard condition I put on everybody's. If there's something in that building that they've got to know about, like, they should be wearing a hazmat suit if there's a chance of explosion or something, I want them to know about it ahead of time so they can be prepared.
So given that, that, you know, the actual inventory could change every day or every few days, how, what is the mechanism for informing the fire department or the health department? Are they going to?
My guess is that the hazardous materials are not going to change? If you read this.
The quantities, Mike, Larry.
Well, just if I might, the hazardous materials, in the case of a retail, are going to be the spray bottle of cleaner under the sink.
Exactly.
There's some soap in the dispenser. Unfortunately, because of the federal status of any marijuana products, there are no material safety data sheets for that. And I would say, you know, flammability is, is different than material safety data, data sheets. I mean, the, the paper in the facility is, is flammable, but not necessarily an issue of material safety data. So if you're referring, Cindy, to the, to the actual product, marijuana product, edibles, things like that, typically, I, I don't believe that MSDS refers to anything that's consumed. So that's paints, volatile chemicals, things like that. So it, it's not really the same department or jurisdiction. Those products are regulated by the Cannabis Control Commission and the, the standards for testing safety and how clean they are, is regulated in, in their regulations and bylaws, and not through the federal material safety data sheet, which I believe is through OSHA.
Yes, OSHA. We have, in my work, and the purpose is for the employees to know the contents of the chemicals that they are dealing with.
Well, I suggest, I think, I'd like to add to this one, that copies have to be provided to the fire department and board of health.
How frequently?
Pardon?
How, how frequently? Monthly, weekly, quarterly?
They have to be given to, and then updated.
Yeah, as they change, perhaps?
Yes.
Okay. Well, Ezra, if you've done this for other clients, has this kind of question come up before?
Yeah, there's, there's frequently questions about MSDS, and, and they, they apply to the cleaning agents. If we're talking, so in the retail, if we're talking about, say, a processing center that is using volatile chemicals, such as solvents, butane, and ethanol, and things like that, that's a whole different category of regulation. Yes, there's MSDS, but that's generally, MSDS generally refers to ingestion. So what happens if you, if you swallow it? What happens if you touch it? Those chemicals, that the category of, of safety for volatile chemicals goes into explosives, C1D1, it's called, and there's all these provisions for the thickness of walls. concrete barriers, you know, the location of tanks outside the building and their distance from any residences and things like that. So there's sort of different categories here. MSDS is important and it's, it's definitely a part of it. In retail, it's literally only the products underneath the cabinet in the bathroom.
Like, for example, my work, we, because we all have, get the hand sanitizer, they, on the MSDS sheet, they list the hand sanitizer. Like, any, any cleaning thing is listed on there, so people who use it are aware of every ingredient.
Yeah, that's a good point. Hand sanitizer, that, that, that would be one that, that would be out, you know, on a counter, for example.
Okay, thanks.
Ready, Larry?
Yep.
Number twelve, hazardous materials containers must be labeled, tagged, and marked with appropriate warnings and the following information, identity of the hazardous chemicals, appropriate hazard warnings, and name and address of the chemical manufacturer, importer, or other responsible party. Number thirteen, prior to the commencement of the operation of the facility, all necessary and required permits must obtained from any and all other municipal, state, and/or federal departments, boards, commissions, or agencies, and all work shall be done in accordance with said permits. Fourteen, the decommissioning plan has been approved by the planning board, it shall be, it shall be the decommissioning plan that will be undertaken when the project is taken out of service for whatever reason. A, the applicant shall provide a form of certi either through escrow account, bond, or other form of certi approved by the planning board to secure the removal, decommission cost of the project. In the event the town of Southampton must remove the installation and remediate the facility. This payment shall be in the amount of $10,000 and shall be provided to the town before the commencement of the, oops, not Sue, use of the use authorized under the special permit. B, once the decommissioning is complete, and after the town's inspection of that work has been done in accordance with the decommissioning plan, the portion of the certi not needed to remediate shall be returned to the applicant. C, if the proposed project is decommissioned and/or abandoned and the amount available is insufficient to remediate, the applicant shall be liable for the deficiency and excess of the certi amount. Number fifteen, if the project is decommissioned or abandoned and the amount available in the decommissioning certi is insufficient to remediate, the town may decommission the project in the event that the applicant defaults on their liability for the deficiency and excess of the certi amount as required in their approved decommissioning plan, place a lien on the property for the cost in excess of the certi available. Number sixteen, hours of operation are limited to Sunday through Saturday, 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m.
Can I ask something about that?
Sure.
Is it possible to have holiday hours? Extended holiday hours and holidays only?
I don't know anything, I don't know anything to prevent that unless the town has a bylaw that prevents that. Does the town have a general bylaw? They close at certain, do you close, does anybody know if package stores are closed on holidays?
No, I would assume that it's gonna probably be the same as any retail establishment, which is most holidays, with the exception of probably three.
I mean, I think what we need to do is, is what, what is this on par with package stores? Because whatever, you know, you, you, because you sort of have to keep them on the same level.
Yeah, and again, package stores are not open on Christmas Day, Thanksgiving Day, and there's like three holidays a year where they can't open or four at the most.
But yeah, I think there's. If the town wants to, they can leave it up to the police chief sometime.
I just looked on the website for Smitty's Package Store directly across the street, it's open till 9:00 p.m.
We're not talking about the hours, we're talking about the holidays.
Okay.
Well, could you put a caveat in there about per, per mass retail laws or?
I mean, I, I don't think you need to. If the mass retail laws don't permit it, they don't permit it. If they do permit it, they do permit it, and certain holidays they do permit it, and certain holidays they don't.
So, so you do not want to define holidays then?
Not unless you want to go, you know, kind of above and beyond what are the state, the state standards.
Right, no, I don't.
So, so let me learn. Sorry. So the, the days that, say, a package store could be open, that is defined by the state, right? I'm just trying to learn from this.
Yeah, yeah, there's, there are certain.
That's a state law.
The state dictates, and then there are certain holidays, you know, that are left up to the town's discretion.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Cindy, the hours are set by the bylaw.
I guess the, the other part of my question regarding number sixteen is, what if in two years the town thinks they'd like to either allow an extension of these hours or a limitation of these hours? Can this be modified? And can any aspect, pardon me?
Then they change the zoning bylaw.
So it would have to be a change in the zoning bylaw?
Yeah, the zoning bylaw says that the, the planning board can set the hours within eight to eight. You could set it from 9:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. if you wanted to. You just couldn't set it from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Okay.
So with this particular item, it basically, they can open anytime after eight and they can close anytime before eight.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Larry, just, just a minute back up to number fifteen, that last line.
Yep.
Place a lien on the property for the cost and excess for certi available. If they're renting, if they're renting a place and they don't own the property, what's the lien on the inventory?
No, it'd be on the property.
But if they're, but if they're leasing a space.
Right, then the, then the owner of the, they're renting it from, it'll be responsible.
To the landlord or the renter?
Yeah, the landlord. If the, if the renter bugs out, because it's a landlord that owns the title of the property.
Right.
Not the rentor.
Right.
So in this particular circumstance, the, and to be honest with you, I don't see this popping up, because I don't see anything, anything up to $10,000 that would be required to decommission this. So I think you're comfortable with that dollar amount. But if for some particular reason it didn't go beyond, and you, and you, and you don't have to do but if you choose that you want to do this, you can put a lien on the property. Because that's the really only, the only thing you can put your hooks into to try to get them to pay it off.
Plus there's additional $10,000 from the state.
Where are you? Are you on seventeen or did you complete seventeen?
We are right at seventeen. Go ahead. Okay, so seventeen says, no use of the facility shall be permitted by the approval of this special permit. May commence until all of the requirements for compliance with section eighteen and conditions of the special permit have been complied with.
You want me to now scroll up to the findings?
Well, let's, let's, let's talk about this. Is anybody, is everybody okay with the condition? Does anybody want to add some conditions?
I have a question because I don't know where, where it goes in terms of what document, and it's probably covered in some other document, and it's just my learning. Where is it covered about the, the three percent tax and that, the monies that would go to the town?
As we talked about at the public hearing, that is the.
That's the bylaw.
That's the, that's the agreement that the select.
That's the whole thing.
The applicant, and that really has nothing to do with the planning board or anything to do with the issuance of the special permit.
Okay.
That's the host agreement, Dan.
Yep. Thank you, I, I'm just trying to, trying to learn, this is new to me, so thank you.
And just to clarify, I'm looking back at the adult use marijuana bylaw. And I see reference to the hours of operation and we said shall occur on premises or via delivery from the premises between the hours of eight to eight. So that's already set in the bylaw. So according to what you just said, Larry, if there was some reason for changing the hours, and that includes holiday hours, then we would have to change the bylaw, correct?
You wanted to allow the operation of the facility earlier than 8:00 a.m. and/or later than 8:00 p.m., you would have to change the zoning bylaw.
And so in answer to Vulcan's question, could there be holiday hours over and above the eight to eight, like before or later, it would require a bylaw change?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, on the days that they're open, they can't open before 8:00 a.m., and they can't say open past 8:00 p.m.
Okay.
So are there any other conditions that the board would want to add? Or we're okay with those seventeen? Correct?
I have no, I have no concerns. Keith?
I have no additional comments or concerns on those conditions.
Cindy?
I have a question. What, what happens for package store conditions or bar or, you know, conditions in terms of checking ID and checking age? And should we have anything like that in here about conditions?
They're required to. But I, I know that the CCC requires a process for that.
Okay, so we don't need to put this in the conditions?
No.
Okay.
Do you want to, you want to address what that is, just to?
Yeah, absolutely. Thanks Cindy. So that, that's basically the purview of the state. So the state does have requirements. It's pretty basic. You know, the, no one entering the store, no one may enter without having their identification checked. Employees are trained to recognize any kind of false IDs. The state sends out secret shoppers. People, you know, the guy who grows a full beard, who's only twenty years old and shows his ID in order to make sure that staff at these establishments are, you know, have laser focus in checking people's IDs for proper dates. And then, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I'm comfortable with all the things that are gonna be done to make certain that you don't, you know, sell to somebody who's underage. However, what I'm wondering, because Larry just asked the question, do we want to change anything in the conditions? I didn't know if we need to address that in the conditions.
Isn't that all part of the state paperwork in the process there?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so it's not necessary to put it in the conditions. Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Then can we have a vote to approve the conditions?
Can I just, one more clarification here, we, we have, we have a two-thirds majority. We're missing one member.
Yep.
Can we go ahead and do that today, or is there gonna be an issue with missing our full board?
No, as I said to begin with, Cindy, it devolves upon Ezra and Vulcan, the applicant. If, if they don't feel comfortable with the body language or the comments we've had going over these conditions, then they can opt to go with the full board, but we have enough tonight to vote on this, provided it's two-thirds, which is gonna be necessary to go forward with it.
Okay, I did hear you say that, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
We missed one thing that we would have to change. If you want Daniel Lavalley to vote on it, and the spelling of my name in, in that document was, was.
That is not part of the conditions, correct?
I don't know, wherever it is, wherever it's spelled wrong.
As I explained at the beginning of the meeting, you're gonna be voting on this in three sections.
Oh, I see.
First thing, you're gonna be voting out of the condition. Okay, because before you make the findings, your findings are based upon, because of the conditions we've adopted, we're satisfied, we're comfortable to make these findings. And then once you've made the findings, and you all agree with the findings, then you vote on, okay, we've made the findings, we're comfortable with those, we've done the conditions, we're comfortable with those, now let's vote whether or not to grant the permit.
Okay, thank you.
But, but, but I do have that changed.
Well, thank you.
Getting back to Larry's question, do we have a, a motion to accept the conditions with the edit on number eleven to add the fire and health department, correct Larry?
Correct.
And wasn't there also a typo?
Yes. From Sue.
The Sue, yeah.
Yeah.
Do I have a motion?
So I move to accept the conditions with those corrections.
Got a second?
Second.
Second from Dan, motion by Cindy. Any other further questions?
I have none.
All in favor, Dan?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Okay, Larry, wanna go on with the findings?
Move up to this of the findings. And there are two, there are two sets of findings you have to make. Okay, it's, it's still part of the permit, so that's the page, that's still the sheet you want up.
You want the one I got up?
Yeah, the one you had to start with.
It's not up, Paul.
It isn't?
It's, it's all, it's all part of the same document.
It's not open.
Or at least not visible to us.
There it is.
Do you see it now?
Yes, sir.
Is it there?
Yes.
Okay.
Gotta go up.
No, that's, that's perfect, right there.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So now you have to, now that you're satisfied with the conditions, now we go over the findings. There are, you know, by, by law, you are required to make, make all of positive findings for all of these. And you not only have to do it for the standard special permit requirements, but there are also additional findings you have to make that are specific for adult marijuana establishments. So the first findings are relative to the zoning bylaw, regular special permit. The Southampton zoning bylaw requires that all of the following findings must be made relative to the approval of the special permit application. One, the marijuana retailer is a use listed in the table of use regulations, article five, as requiring a special permit in the CH district for which the application is made. Number two, the use is not detrimental to the town or neighborhood and is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this bylaw as it complies with the adopted adult use marijuana establishment bylaw. Number three, this project has been reviewed by the planning board's planning consultant as well as the town's public health director, police chief, fire chief, building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, highway superintendent, and water department superintendent, who all found no issues with it. The planning board finds that the project and conditions of the special permit will mitigate any harm to public health, safety, or comfort by reason of transmission or emission of radiation, fumes, dust, gas, smoke, or poisons by reason of vibrations, noise, fire explosion, or hazard, or by tending to polluted water. Number four, adequate off-street parking and loading will be accommodated on-site and no parking or stacking will be occurring on the public street. The project will generate no significant increase in traffic above that of the prior occupiers of the commercial space. All vehicles will be accommodated on-site and will not impair pedestrian or vehicular circulation. Number five, all waste generated by this facility will be disposed of in accordance with all required standards in a legal and authorized manner. There is no increase or alteration of the site stormwater management when the property is not located or in an identified flood zone. Number six, no, no additional special provision set forth in section eleven applied to this application. And number seven, the requested use will not impair the integrity or character of the district or adjoining zones, nor be detrimental to the health, safety, so, health, safety, or well. Now, there are additional special permit findings required under section eighteen. Number five, A, this marijuana establishment, marijuana retailer is consistent with and does not derogate from the purposes and intent of this section in the zoning bylaw in that it is permitted by special permit in the CH district and complies with the required regulations. B, this marijuana establishment, marijuana retailer complies with signage and customer viewing requirements designed to minimize any adverse visual or economic impacts on the butters and other parties and entrance. C, this marijuana establishment, marijuana retailer has demonstrated that it meets or exceeds all of the permitting requirements of all applicable agencies within the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and will be in compliance with all applicable state laws and regulations. D, the applicant is satisfied all of the conditions or requirements of this section and other applicable sections of this bylaw. E, the marijuana establishment, marijuana retailer provides adequate security measures to ensure no direct threat to the health or safety of other individuals, that the storage and/or location of cultivation is adequately secured on-site or through transportation. that the storage and/or location of cultivation is adequately secured on-site or through transportation off-site, and has met the requirements of the town police and fire chief. F, the marijuana establishment, marijuana establishment, marijuana retailer has adequately addressed issues of traffic demand, circulation flow, parking and queuing, particularly at peak periods at the facility, and its impact on neighboring uses. So those are the suggested findings. Does anybody have a problem with those? And if not, a motion to adopt the findings?
Anybody have any questions on those?
Two questions. It seems to me, and somebody's going to have to help me with this, when we did the marijuana bylaw and went before town meeting, somebody raised the concern about, help me with this, maybe some individuals who need to be able to utilize the product very close to the actual facility. Does somebody remember any of that at the town meeting? There was a question about, you know, somebody who had a condition that they, they needed to get that marijuana right away. And I'm wondering if that's addressed here, or am I just not remembering correctly?
I, I wasn't at the town meeting, so I don't really know the conversation, but what does that have to do with this?
Well, I guess the question is, does any of this, when can somebody consume the product? Can they consume it right after they walk out the door?
No, can't be done on the premises.
All right, so is that addressed in the state laws and therefore?
That's controlled by the state.
So we don't need this, under this section here at all, anything about where and how it's consumed?
No.
I think Cindy, as I recall, one of the conversations, it could be what you're referring to about individuals that had to consume it while they were off, off-site, but then it had something to do with them being ID'd about it, or having a medical card with them to prove that they could be consuming it on, on, not on the premises, but maybe on their way out of the place or somewhere else. They, they approved that they have an ID. Ezra, I don't know, maybe you can weigh in on that.
Yeah, so first of all, that's anything to do with medical marijuana, which is a different legal category. It's just not, this, this has nothing to do that, because this is adult use. So that we don't sell, or, you know, so that the, the product categories are similar, i- if not identical, but no product in this store is considered medical marijuana under, under the law. Secondarily, there is no, I have extensive knowledge of, of medical use. There is no provision that allows the consumption of medical cannabis outside the home. There may be something that a nursing home or, or some, a hospital, I've never heard of anything. It, it's very clear cannabis can only be consumed in a private residence.
Good.
They have not approved the cafe scenario yet.
Okay.
Thank you, that's a very good point, Larry. When they approve that, which they have not provided stipulations, in fact, the legislature has to change state law to, to even allow municipalities to okay social consumption sites, then that will be a very different conversation, but it's probably a couple of years away.
Well, that's really helpful, and I appreciate that Ezra, because I do remember a little more about the circumstance that came up at town meeting. It was for someone who perhaps had PTSD secondary to, to being, you know, perhaps in the military, or someone with intractable pain, and they could only get pain relief if they consumed it. Now granted, you said the products are essentially the same. This is not a medical distribution site, but and so you're, you're very clear to us that it is simply not allowed to consume these products except in, in someone's private residence or property, correct?
Correct.
That's governed by state law.
Okay, all right. I know, I'm just kind of rattling the brain, that's all.
So are we okay with the findings?
Keith, are you okay?
Yeah, I am. I don't, I don't have any further questions on it. I'll, I'll be so bold to make a motion to approve the findings as stated.
Motion made by Keith. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made by Keith, seconded by Cindy. Any other further discussion? All in favor, Keith, yes? Cindy?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Paul, yes.
I just have one question, Ezra, and, and under the property address, I have fifteen column highway. Is there a particular unit or suite number?
That may be better addressed with Vulcan.
G two.
Okay, what is it?
G two, Larry, G two.
G two? Capital P, number two?
G like Garrick or G two.
Okay, but it's G two, not G Ashdod.
G two. No, just G two, yeah, just, no, not G two, yeah, just G two.
Okay. Good. That fills in that blank. Then the last step is, if the board is satisfied with the conditions and satisfied with the findings, the next step is to do a roll call vote.
So. Before, before we go to that, can I, can I refer to Vulcan and Ezra about their sentiments at this point with?
Are they, are they feeling lucky?
You say yes.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. And yeah, Vulcan, I, I believe you're on. Yeah, I, I feel confident, and I appreciate that we've had both a vote on conditions and a vote on, a vote on findings, which were constituted a majority. And so I, I, I believe that we should go through with the vote if I get a, a agreement from Vulcan.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree a hundred percent. We went through this with Ezra, and, I mean, a lot of these things, we already said yes to. We're already aware of the situation.
And I might add, and I, I said before at the last hearing, and this is for, for the first time, this has come before us, I, I'm so impressed with the presentation and the, the application, how it was put forward. We don't get many that come this complete and with this type of expertise as in Ezra that can lay out the scene for it, because he's done it several times in the, throughout the state, so I, I believe they did a fine job in presenting their case here for the past three or four weeks.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
And I'll add that I happen to be nearby, and Vulcan invited me for a little private tour a week or so ago, two weeks ago, and he was very professional and showed me the inside a little bit, and it's very attractive.
Well, that's called ex parte communication, and it's, it's against the law, I'm afraid, Cindy.
Oops.
Go ahead.
Oh dear.
We won't tell, we won't tell anybody.
Okay.
Wasn't any, wasn't any free samples available yet, was there?
He had no, he had no product.
Yeah, no, it's, it's just the demo phase right now, anyway, so it's just.
I don't like breaking laws. Okay, thanks Larry.
Actually, I think you're at the coffee place, weren't you next door?
I was getting my hair cut, I was getting my hair cut.
So Larry, shall I call for the?
Your roll call vote?
Roll call vote? So I, do I need a motion to get it to the vote, or should we just ask for the vote?
Nope. Ask for a roll call vote, you call off everybody's name, and then they say yes or no.
All right, at this time, I will call for that rolling call.
You first need a motion to either approve it or disapprove it.
A motion to approve the special permit.
There you go. And now you have to go down the list for a, a yes or a no.
Do you need a second on the motion?
Yes.
I second it.
Motion made by Keith and seconded by Cindy. Paul Demon, yes. Paul Forgot, absent. Keith Locke?
Yes.
Cindy Palmer?
Yes.
Dan Lavalley?
Yes.
We have four with one absent. The motion to approve passes.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Welcome to Southampton.
Well, we still have, I just want to remember, remind everybody, we still have a, a building permit to go through.
Right.
And things are just starting right now, and we still have to build the place, so this was, you know, it was another milestone. But we're getting closer and closer.
Now Larry, you'll make those edits and get it to me, I will get them, I will sign my name and just because of this COVID board, I'm going to bring it to the clerk's office and have her file it. I'll sign, but I would ask you all to get in at some point within the next week and sign the decision while it's in the process of the appeal period. So it's finalized for, for them.
And the, and the clock will technically, the clock will technically start the date the fourth person signs it. So.
This is a really tiny thing, but Cindy is my nickname. Do you think you need my full name on there?
I would.
Yeah, that would be best.
My name is Lucinda.
Hold on.
I will now guess though.
L U C I N D A.
Yep.
So we want you to be famous, and we want you, want them to have your name correct.
I just don't want anything to screw it up for them, you know?
I hear you.
So I'm assuming you'll get that to me probably tomorrow or Friday, and then I'll get it to the clerk Monday morning, first thing, or in the afternoon, and I would expect Dan and Keith and Cindy to see if you can get in there before four o'clock when she closes sometime. Probably call ahead too, to tell her you're coming, and I'll give her a heads up too.
Would it be too much to ask if you could just send us an email after you've dropped it off?
Yes. I certainly will.
Thank you, sir.
All right, without any further ado, I want to thank Ezra, Vulcan, Larry, very good job. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate, appreciate the support.
We wish you good luck and a lot of success in on the years ahead.
Thank you.
Please, please stop by when we're open too.
Yeah.
I'll stop in, I'll stop in for some gummies.
Gummies.
Keep that safe, get something.
Yeah, I have a question for Larry and maybe Paul. How, how long is the special permit? Is it an indefinite special permit, or is this a one-year permit, a two-year?
No, this, this is in perpetuity.
Yeah, as I just voted, it's as long as you own it.
Right, great.
If you, if you change hands or sell it, then it has to come back.
Or if you somehow really screw it off, the board can call you back in and change it. But I know that some towns will give it to you for one year. I don't like doing that, because it, it's probably not so much affects you, but for like a restaurant, it requires financing, no bank is going to give them a mortgage, a construction loan or a business loan if it's only good for a year.
Right.
All right, thank you everyone.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on here for a bit.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Hi.
Thank you.
Thanks again, Larry.
Take it easy.
Thank you, Larry. Next part of the agenda I have, we need nominations for both representatives to the PBPC and also Virginia Ahart contacted me with Jim Labrie leaving the board. We need a new rep for the community preservation commission. So is there anyone interested in being our PBPC rep? Or CPC?
Paul, who was our PBPC rep prior to this time? Was that?
Paul Forgot.
Well, do we know whether he's interested in continuing?
I, I don't, in fact, he was pretty tied up in the past year, but I, I could ask him again, or I was his alternate in the event that he didn't, so I, I don't know if anyone else is interested outside of that.
Yeah, I was going to attend the one tomorrow, just because I got the invitation, just see what it was.
I forwarded that to you to see, so you might get your feet wet, Dan, just seeing what they do and how they conduct business and some, some of the topics that they discuss. Would you like to be the representative for this board?
Well, I wouldn't want to take, if Paul wants to do it, I would hate to take something away from somebody who's already has ownership of it, and, but yes, if he does not want to do it, then I, I would do it.
All right, let me, let me confirm it with him. And how about CPC?
I volunteer to do that. Unless somebody else wants it.
You might see me in front of the board looking for money, but I'll let you.
Okay. I'll confirm that, Dan, and let you know, and Cindy, I will let Virginia know and Lucy Dalton that you're the new rep from our committee for that. I don't have any building permits. There's two residential stormwater permits that are, have been filed. One of them is on Pleasant Street, which Mark Reed is representing. It's pretty straightforward. And I have another one on High Street. Daniel?
I'm well familiar with that one through.
Greg Felton at thirty-two High Street. Now, this one here is a little bit more interesting. This is a project, some of you may already know about it, that was started years ago, but now the parcel has increased the clearing on that parcel to more than the threshold that we require. And unfortunately, the applicant didn't file for a permit at the time. A lot of work has been done, and a lot of site reclamation has been done. And right now, it's under a cease and desist by the building department, so I've got plans, and he's scheduled to go forward with the hearing. But I think, for all intents and purposes, we need to do a site visit on this one to see what's been done, so we can get a better handle of it going forward, and how we're going to address it. And I don't know your people's schedule, would you like to do it on a Saturday or late in the afternoon on a weekday? I'd have to inform the property owner that we'd come. But it's, it's going to require that we see this site, definitely.
So if there's a cease and desist order, wouldn't we want to see that resolved before we talk about anything else?
What, the cease and, they can't go, he can't go any further without obtaining the stormwater and getting the stormwater squared away.
Okay, so is the stormwater permit part of resolving the cease and desist issue?
It is the resolution to the cease and desist.
Oh, thanks, okay.
Yeah. What do you think for schedule? I know a lot of you folks are busy, but give me some scenarios, and, you know, hopefully we all could meet, but, and then I would post it, because John, you can help me out with this. If, if we meet offsite, we just have to post it, not as a formal meeting, but as a site visit?
A site visitor, you could actually have the meeting posted on the site. But you don't want people showing up for a meeting there, so, you know, you don't want the public around you doing it at that point, so.
No, I just wondered, but if the five of us, say for instance, all five showed up, if that constitutes a meeting, and I believe it does of some sort, which we have to post, correct?
Yeah, you can post it, but, you know, the error on that is, you've got to be there with a, you know, a majority, making decisions, talking about it and all that, so if you're not making any decisions or anything, you're just doing a site visit. That doesn't constitute a, you know, a violation of the open meeting law.
All right, but to be on the safe side, to post it as a site visit, correct?
I would, sure.
Yeah, good, thank you. What do you, what do you think? I know Keith and Dan, you're working people, me and Cindy kind of goof off here and there.
Oh, yeah, right, yeah. Oh yeah, right, yeah.
My work is pretty flexible in terms of when I can, as long as I got my 40 hours in, they're happy, so, you know.
Keith, what's your schedule, I know you're.
Yeah, my boss is a jerk.
Who's your boss?
Myself.
Would you prefer to do it late afternoon or on a Saturday? Or this Monday, you know, I hate to tie your time up on a holiday, it won't take.
I'm actually out of town beginning tomorrow afternoon, my earliest availability would probably be Tuesday at five o'clock. That would be the earliest I could attend.
Dan? Tuesday, Tuesday at five?
Yeah, that's fine.
Cindy?
Yeah, that's okay, it's starting to get dark early, is that still light enough at five o'clock?
Yeah, well, this won't take long, probably less than half an hour, half an hour at best.
What number, High Street?
Thirty, thirty-two.
Okay.
And I'll let Paul know, hopefully he can rearrange his schedule, or he's on his way home from work or something where we can get up there and look at that, because it's going to be, and the only reason I'm saying this is out of the ordinary is because the work has been done, but also some of the submissions are incomplete, so that's why we'll need to visit the site and decide going forward what course of action we want to take.
And I believe there have been incidents of washouts onto the road.
Yeah, I, I don't know, but we'll, we'll be asking, we'll be asking Concom, Highway, Port of Health and the Building Inspector for any of their comments on this as well. Okay, so put that on your calendar, that Tuesday is the thirteenth?
Yeah.
Thirty-two High Street, I don't have anything else, but Dan, you, you had some
Yeah.
Comments and some questions or inquiries you wanted to make.
Yeah, Paul's been very patient with me, with my, you know, getting on board and asking questions and, you know, he says, well, you should really be asking these at the meeting, and he's right, so he's given, at least give me the opportunity to ask you guys, so I can learn a little bit more, one of my questions was, you've already answered it, I was asking about site visits, like do we do them, how do we do them, how do they go about doing them, but, well, we just walked through how we do them, so that, that obviously answers that question.
But just to expound on that a minute, Dan, and Keith, you can back me up on this, typically with a lot of the residential ones, they're pretty straightforward, we haven't had to, they're not complicated, we have been out on some subdivisions over the years, but not recently with anything residential, so Keith.
Yeah, subdivision sidewalks, you know, a lot of the, some of the other applications we see are for, you know, residential solar panel installations, we typically don't need to do sidewalks on those, it's been close calls sometimes if, depending on citing of the panel and neighborhood issues, if we, you know, but I don't think we've done a sidewalk for a solar installation, but usually it's subdivisions or when an issue like 32 High Street arises, where there's some sort of cease and desist violation, then, then we would do a sidewalk.
Yeah, yeah, that makes a lot of sense, so, so thank you, yeah, we kind of take it as a case by case basis, but it's more of when it's an extreme case that we would do that, so, so I was, I was, I was kind of wondering about, about that. And the other thing I was wondering about was, I had my notes here, so I was just wondering, do, do we have other organizations or other planning boards, like are we part of like, you know, the Planning Association of America or something where we go, attend for training to get the latest information, or have any, any external learning sources that we rely on?
The only one, the only one that I forward to everybody every year is from PBPC, they send out a list of some of the seminars or informational sessions, conferences throughout Massachusetts, so when I see those, I send those out to board members, and if someone is interested in attending, then we certainly would, the board would pay the fee for the registration if someone had interest to attend. Most of the time, they're always during the week and they're during the day, which many of us can't make.
Yeah.
Sometimes there's an exception where they're on Saturdays where they held them, so, yeah, when I get those, I send them about, but as for belonging to any national associations or regional, no, just AVPC.
Well, yeah, yeah, that's, that's perfectly fine, and, and great to hear that, you know, you send those out, because, you know, as, as a new guy, I'm, I'm looking for ways that I can get up to speed faster with things, so I just wanted to ask you, ask about that, so.
I told Dan, if he has any questions regarding zoning, clarification about the bylaws or planning procedures, so to speak, if there's nothing that we can answer as a board, then I, I would then send him for a comment from Larry Smith, but as I told Dan, I don't want to overuse Larry with random questions, because, you know, he has a fee involved and we have to be prudent with our, our funds, but because I do want Dan to learn as much as he can, but I'll tell you quite frankly, Dan, it took me a long time when I first started this in North Hampton over, it's almost going on 20 years, where it took me a good probably five or six months to sit and listen and watch, but mostly listen and read bylaws before I got a feel of what the process was about, because I, again, I'm not a planner, I wasn't an engineer, I was put on the board because I came from a different walk of life, and at the time, the mayor said, oh geez, if we had all engineers on a planning board, there wouldn't be any kind of cross-section or different ideas coming from other walks of life, and I thought that was kind of interesting, but I.
I thought I knew that the best ideas to begin with, Paul.
So, it's, it was nice to, to sit back and learn the process and, and see how it went, and then after a while, it flowed, but don't be, don't be afraid to ask questions. With the board, because these guys have a wealth of information, including Paul, who isn't with us today.
Yeah, I think that that's all really good advice, and I appreciate the part about, you know, sitting back and listening. I need to learn to do that better at some time in my life.
Can I interject for a second?
What was that Keith?
Yeah, can I just interject for a second, I want to, I'm going to show you something, Dan, I'm assuming you can probably get it online, but this was something John Furman, who was chairman prior to Mr. Demon, gave me when I joined the board. See if you can, probably coming through backwards, but what it is, is it's, you might want to write this down, the ANR, as in Approval Not Required Handbook, and it's put out by Commonwealth of Massachusetts, Department of Housing and Community Development, so you can probably Google it and find it online, but it talks about the approval not required process, and then it goes into, much of this manual is case law that talks about where, you know, somebody came in with an approval not required on an existing dirt road, and the town denied it because it wasn't an adequate public way. So it gives you a lot of examples of, you know, things that went to court because a board didn't feel it was, it didn't meet the, the ANR guidelines, which, you know, we, we've pretty much had pretty straightforward ANRs in town, but we have a lot of inadequate dirt roads that have a lot of frontage. So there, that's a potential concern for the future in this town is, you know, are, are we able to prove ANRs on inadequate public ways? One-way dirt roads, right, things like that, so there's a lot of interesting case law in that handbook, I would suggest you peruse it at your leisure.
Oh, I will, thank you, thank you for the advice.
Hey, Dan, if you get a copy of that, they never told me about that, so, could you, could you download a copy of that for me too?
Oh, yeah, I will do that, yes.
John never even gave me a copy of it, the son of a.
Thanks Keith.
But you guys didn't ask, Dan's the first one to ask.
Yeah.
I think I've had my share of stupid questions, what are you talking about?
See what I mean, Dan, you come to the meeting and you ask, and you've got a wealth of information already there from Keith.
Yeah, no, you're right, Paul.
I, I have, I found it pretty easily, I just found it, and it was, there was a revision September 2010, so I did a search for ANR Handbook, capital M, capital A, as in Massachusetts, and it brought it right up, so there's some interesting case studies in there that really make you think about, you know, zoning laws and, and things like that.
And I remember Keith, not to belabor the subject, remember when Larry, we had a conversation with him about that some time ago, and he said, you know, it's not, it's not just a rubber stamp approval sometimes, depending on where it's located.
Oh yeah.
Where it is, he said, it can, it can't be controversial.
Right.
So when Dan finishes his questions, I've got a circumstance that I need to talk about with the board, so Dan, keep going with your question.
No, those, those really were, were my questions, you know, just trying to understand, I want to, I want to know a little more about site visits, we talked about that, and I was wondering if there were more places I could go to get more information, you guys helped me out with that, and yeah, that was, that was really it, those were the, the things I was kind of wondering about and wanting to learn more about, so thank you.
Yeah, I would, I would say that ANR Handbook, read the town bylaws, read the town zoning bylaws, and then read the subdivision, the town subdivision regulations, a lot of information, it's probably four, 500 pages of information, but
Yeah.
You know, the more subdivision you do, we haven't had a subdivision in a while, but it's a repetitive process for most of this stuff.
Yep.
Yeah, it's online on our website, link to policies and procedures. Cindy, what do you got?
Okay, so, as you know, I, I represent the planning board on, on three different other committees. Just a quick update on the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and I think I told you at the last meeting, we had a really excellent turnout for the updated survey, that data, it was close to 900 people, and that data is being kind of looked at clearly by the PBPC consultant, remember this is a DLTA grant that the planning board signed for, and on October 13th, we're going to come up with a more concise plan on presenting it to the select board, and also presenting it to the, to the town in general, whether there'd be an opportunity for a public hearing, or at least posted on our website, including the raw data, more, more of the raw data, not just the sort of outcome report, so that's one thing, that's the Master Plan Implementation Committee. The Open Space and Recreation Plan Update, I, I attended the select board meeting last night and I heard Ed Gibson giving a report on that, there was one small piece that he was finalizing, and that was the ADA report, and he's said he's going to be finalizing it this week, then there's a couple of steps, one of them is get the planning board to agree to the report before it goes to the state, or even concurrent with going to the state, a public hearing, and the select board has to sign off on it as well, we're all, we're looking at seeing this finalized, I think in the month of October, we hope, all that works. So that's, that's very good, things are finally coming together on that. The Open Space Committee, there's a lot happening, there's a lot happening, we know of parcels in our town that are for sale, that people have come to meetings, talking about how they would like to see their land conserved, and I'm talking large parcels, especially up in the north end of the Tyke, of our, of our town, above Tycomode Reservoir, in the watershed. But the specific one I want to talk about is way over on the eastern part of our town, I know you've all seen the assessor's map, but, you know, this is kind of how it looks, and right here, there's this little one that sticks out, and it's, it's lot number 31, and it's right on the East Hampton line, and it's right near the mass fisheries and wildlife land, it's also, remember the land that was conserved, Cook County Road, it was a joint effort with East Hampton, Southampton, several years ago, I guess in 2012, well, there's a gentleman there who sent a letter to whom it may concern in the town, I think Ed Gibson read it at the select board meeting last night, he, he owns 32 acres, it's public record, his name is Mr. Psychowski, he is an East Hampton resident, he lives on Palmeroy Street in East Hampton, but he has 32 acres landlocked in Southampton, and he said in his letter that he would really like to see this land conserved, on the other hand, he wants to, you know, sell it for conservation. So I let Ed know today that there's been a lot happening, because I guess, am I right John, because I didn't state till the end of the meeting that Ed was going to be sending a letter to, the Psychowskis just sort of acknowledging that it had been received.
Yeah, I had brought that up actually, because he wanted to talk to Concom Planning, et cetera, and I suggested that we let the person know that we're interested, but it will take some time for us to get back to them, rather than not say anything and have them approach somebody to buy it, so Ed is going to contact the owner.
Well, we already sent him a letter, Open Space Committee, already sent him a letter, and I let, I let Ed know, I've met with the people, and I will tell you, the mass fishes and fishery and wildlife people, they have a land agent, she's, she's had them on her radar for four years. It's right over the Aquifer, it's landlocked in Southampton, I let Paul Demon know about this a couple of weeks ago, he, thank you very much, got an opinion from Larry Smith on this, and it's, it's really important, because I think this gentleman is thinking that it's developable, accessing it through East Hampton. I looked at the, at the subdivision bylaws for our town, and it very clearly states, in my assessment, and I guess Larry and Paul both agreed with me, that for a subdivision road to be built, it has to be accessed by, through a Southampton road, for emergency purposes essentially, or for road maintenance purposes, so that's going to affect the development, you know, appraisal, we don't have an official appraisal on this. The other parties that are fully informed about this is the, all of the town of East Hampton, in the sense of Jeff, is his name Jeff Bag, the planning board professional, the Water Commission in East Hampton, and I, and Patty Gamborini, you need, email me quickly, I don't know if she's a volunteer on that planning, on the Water Board, Water Commission?
She used to work with the Aquifer.
She did.
Barnes Aquifer, yeah.
I, I'm not really sure, I mean, I'm glad I knew her, because she's so easy to work with, but, so it's on everybody's radar screen, whether the town of Southampton is going to have to pay any money towards this, I'm not certain it's going to be necessary, because there might be other entities that can contribute to the purchase of it, I just, I simply don't know at this point. But here's my major question, do you think I can get an opinion that's, that I can be sharing this? Can I share Larry Smith's email response in terms of his interpretation of the bylaws? And then secondly, a question has come up about, do we have other roads, maybe preceding the subdivision bylaws? I'm not, sorry, not roads, other properties that are only accessed through non-Southampton roads, specifically on Mountain Road, I'm told that there might be some parcels that are actually in Southampton, but that's, that's a Hoyell Road. Does anybody know the answer to that?
No, but my, my sense is, if it, if the, the access is in one town and lands in another, then it's got to be grandfathered, it's that, it's that old.
So, okay, so we could only work with our newly appointed, or newly approved subdivision bylaws, what's that, 2012, I guess? And those bylaws clearly state it has to be a road accessed from another Southampton roads, and forget the, the grandfathered ones, it's sort of a moot point, correct? Is that how I should interpret that?
What would you think Keith?
You're, you're muted.
He's muted.
I, I would, I would agree that, yeah, anything, any existing condition prior to the revised subdivision regulations is, is therefore grandfathered. Cindy, are you thinking private residences or subdivisions?
I think, I think this gentleman assumes that there can be a subdivision in his land, not yet developed, but then, and so then, a question came to me, but wait a minute, don't we already have some parcels, not subdivisions, but some properties? some parcels, not subdivisions, but some properties?
Yeah.
That are, and the example was up on Mountain Road.
Yeah, that's ancient history then, in my opinion, you know.
It also, it also appears to me, he doesn't want to develop the land. He'd rather see it conserve. And yet he wants to find out the value of it, if it could be a subdivision to play, use it to person leverage in, in, in what the value of the property is about, probably.
I would, I would say that's probably his thinking. Yeah.
Yeah.
So, all right, so back to my question. Can I get an official opinion that can be shared with the other entities that are looking at potentially contributing to purchasing it or? Can I just use Larry's email on that?
Well, yeah, that was, I can copy it or you can copy it, I suppose, and, and send it forward. He did the research on it or he wouldn't have sent the, the opinion. So.
Okay, I just, I wanted permission to use it. That's all. Okay. All right.
He asked me, you know, he's our consultant. I, I consulted with him. He gave the answer. So I'm, I'm sure that that opinion will hold. I wouldn't want anybody contacting him directly about it. They'd have to go through this board.
Okay, all right, then I will do that. So I think that's the gist of my report where me, the open space committee is meeting again October 15th. There's a lot of parcels that are being looked at, landowners that have expressed interest in one form or another, or are, hey, they have parcels that are connected to our already conserved land. And, and Mark Wansley, who's from Kestrel, I assume you all know who he is. He's a marvelous partner. I mean, he knows how to do this stuff. And I had a, an hour long conversation with him the other day about potential for grants, potential for experts to talk to some of these landowners about the various, like, tax options if they were to donate or, you know, write it in their wills or various ways of approaching it. These are way out of my areas of expertise. So we need an expert to talk about it. So. That's, that's my report. That's all I have. Oh, and then Paul, what, what's the next step on the, the stormwater bylaw? That work that's been done from this board?
At this point, I just have to schedule a public hearing for it, I guess, and see how that plays out.
Okay.
John, there's a town meeting this next weekend, correct?
Not this weekend, but the weekend after, 15th.
And then probably there'll be one, do you expect there'll be another before the end of the year or probably not till after 2020?
Not till probably January, February. We're talking maybe February.
Okay, good.
Okay, so the special town meeting is the 17th, John?
17th on the Saturday, yeah.
It's a Saturday. Is it 10:00 in the morning or 9:00?
10:00 in the morning, Labrefield.
Okay, right.
And, and lastly, I'm just going to interject. I asked Larry Smith about continuing the bylaw revisions that we had had to put on hold because he's not adverse to it. Naturally, he'd like to meet in person like we all would and discuss things, but given how we don't know how soon we're going to be back meeting. He's willing to go forward with it and picking up where we left off. And for, for your purposes, Dan, we can't, we can't go back and start from square one just for your benefit because we've covered a lot of ground there, but.
I wouldn't want to cause you to do that.
No, but we would give you the material, but then you'd have a chance to weigh in and comment during the public hearing process, which has to go through after, you know, we, we adopt the draft. So if you had any questions about the ones we've covered leading up to that, you could interject then and we could discuss your concerns if any by then, but we can't go back in.
Yes.
At this point, we've got too much of it behind us.
Understood.
So I don't know what you people think. Do you think we, if we have a low of someone of these times, we should pick it back up going forward?
Yeah, I do.
Yeah. So I'll, I'll pass that along to Larry. Other than that, I have nothing else. I don't have any warrants. I have no communications other than that. And right now I'll plan to visit you folks Tuesday at 32 High Street and we'll look at that project and deal with it on the 21st.
So Paul, we, I know we usually only meet once a month in the summertime, but we're going to go into our twice a month meeting schedule?
Oh, yeah, we're back to twice a month now.
Okay.
We have been since September. So, yeah.
Okay.
And we'll also be heading to town hall to sign something soon, right, this week?
I'll let you know when it's there. More than likely, I'll get it there Monday afternoon. And again, try to get there before 4 o'clock sometime soon. So this gets going.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Town hall's open on Monday.
Not this Monday, I'm sorry. It'll be Tuesday then. Thanks Keith.
Just for your information, Lucy, you got to call her ahead of time. She's, she's not letting anybody in the office, or at least she wasn't a few weeks ago. So if you call her, she'll, unless it's pouring rain, she'll just walk up to the steps and you can sign it.
Yep. She's very good about getting my mail.
Good.
All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, I have a good weekend, nice long weekend. Thank you for hanging in there tonight, everybody. And Keith, did the power come back yet? No?
No.
Speed days, huh?
I got a message from my wife saying she's sleeping over at the Fergles house tonight because their, their road's blocked off. So, I don't know. She's, she's stuck there.
Dan, enjoy yourself.
Time for a party, Dan.
Yeah, right. Me and my cats, I don't know.
So I gotta just say that my son just texted me and he doesn't have power up there on lead mine. And, you know, here we are, school is all virtual. Can the kids come down and do their wifi classes at my house? You know, there.
Look what you're doing tomorrow.
By the way, can you give them breakfast and lunch, you know? It's okay.
Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you guys. Bye.
Good night.